Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're getting off to a late start in our publicized committee meeting. I'd like to call Sumter County Council regular meeting Tuesday, March 12th to order. Ms. Bean, let us all stand, please, for the invitation and free remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. I'm here to help everybody, but we do thank you for being the one in whom we live and move and have our being. We understand that the earth is yours in the fullness thereof. Therefore, we are serving on your behalf, and we are grateful that you have afforded us as servants. As we begin this meeting this evening, we invite your presence and ask that you abide with us. Help us to go through our agenda the way you would have us to do it. We ask your blessings upon everyone under the sound of my voice. We ask that you continue to bless our men and women who are serving our country in uniform and those that are not in the military but are serving in other capacities. We especially ask for you to bless those that are in harm's way and bring them safely home to their families. And as I've asked, help us to always make good decisions according to your will. These are our blessings we thank and ask in your name. Amen.
Tonight, we read the pledge of allegiance by U.S. Air Force retired veteran, Ms. Lawrence Hubbard.
Please join me in pledge.
Oh, oh, oh. I'm sorry. She served our country from October 1981 to March 2000. She supported Operation Desert Storm and Desert Shield and retired as a senior master sergeant. She lives in County Council District Number Five. Thank you for your service, Ms. Lawrence, and a fantastic citizen.
Yes, and she's...
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Ms. Bean, we approve the agenda. Item number eight, number one. I'd like to move up to under number five once we approve the minutes.
Yes.
I approve a minute of agenda. So I just moved it properly second that approved the minimum agenda in a discussion. Hearing none, please say aye. We have a motion to approve a minutes from our council cell over. Thank you, Ms. Bean. So I accept. We have a motion and a second that we approve the minutes in a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. At the 2023 Insurance Trust meeting, Sumter County won a trust safety achievement award, and we have Mr. Robert Benfield, who's the Director of Insurance Services, and he will be presenting the award to our department head, Mr. Don Adu.
Good to see you again, sir. Yes, Mr. Chairman and Council. Thank you for allowing me to come before you all tonight. So often when we talk about county government, it's got negative connotations nowadays. It's my pleasure tonight to come before you to talk about some of the great stuff Sumter County's been doing on risk management. Risk management by definition is what we do to keep bad stuff from happening. The goal of county government is to protect counties' assets. The most important asset any county has is its people, followed by its property, its money, and its citizens. Well, tonight, it's my pleasure to come before and talk about the outstanding safety achievement award that you received for a risk management activity that not only protects county employees and county property and your citizens, it brings all those things together, and that is truly the sign of a successful risk management program. Don Adu, Robert, and their team have done an incredible job of looking forward and trying to anticipate what could happen in the future. So the outstanding safety achievement award you're receiving tonight is for something called the Rave Panic App. This application you can put on a computer system, on a phone, that in the event of a, God forbid, active shooter result, a tornado, hurricane, or natural disaster, the employee can hit a button and notify all county employees in the area, calls 911, and geolocates where the event occurred, do our faster response, or EMS, the sheriff's office, and et cetera. This is truly something that if you ever needed it, will resolve the saving lives, time, and money of both your county employees and your citizens. In addition, if the employee were at home and were hit the button, it would activate 911 and get a faster response time to their house. So this is truly a forward thinking, and I want to praise county council, the risk management county administrator. They're willing to put the time and money to back up an app like this that has the potential to truly save lives. So it's my pleasure tonight to take this award to Sumter County, and I would ask that Don Adu, Robert, to come forward. I'd like to present this to you guys. And county council, I'd love for you all to come down and give a picture back to your support of risk management programs.
Always. You want all of us, Rob?
I'd love to have you all come down and show your support. We can't wait to see how.
Will the picture show up that y'all are all standing right behind you? That might be better. We'd get them kind of stacked there, Joe. Get that wide enough.
Professional photographer.
I see that. It's like a word now that I'm over in here. Keep moving in.
I got a solution.
As a risk manager. Don't move your stuff.
Risk manager, right. I'm a problem solver.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Good seeing you. Great job. Thank you. Thanks for coming out. See you. Next item on the agenda, ordinance amendment number 2304, first reading.
Apparently, this re-reading should give them just one moment. Article 2304 is an update and correction for some industry reference codes found in Article 385, and the corresponding references in Article 5 of the zoning and development standards ordinance. As you may recall, when we did the SSC code to NICS code conversion, I had indicated that as we continue using it, we may find that we need to make some corrections because of how the industry transitions happen, and this is one of those instances. This is to correct two industries that inadvertently, one got dropped out of zoning districts, and two were supposed to be a special exception, but got lumped into an industry that was a byright use, so this will correct those issues. In particular, this is to update requirements to address pet boarding and residential care uses. These were originally broken into different NICS codes that don't actually correctly classify at the use table. We did the SSC to NICS transition, and so we actually didn't become aware of this until we had some requests come in to do these businesses, and then we took a very close look and figured out that they were misclassified by regulations, and we need to make those corrections. So this amendment will bring both of those uses back into alignment with how they were treated prior to the SSC to NICS conversion, which was our general intent when we did that code transition. We were not changing how uses were allowed or where they were allowed. They were to remain in the districts that they were previously in, so this will make that correction. In particular, residential care homes and nursing facilities in the NICS code are a much more detailed group, so it got spread out into four different classifications that we didn't net them all into when we did our transition. So this is actually going to loop back in residential care, what we consider residential care homes, into our residential districts and our commercial districts. So the changes that you see on your monitor in red are where we're making those corrections and adding that particular use back into the district. So when we talk about residential care homes, we talk about homes for the mentally or physically handicapped. We talk about the small-scale nursing homes for the elderly that we have in some of our communities. We talk about group homes for children. Those all fall under residential care. And then the other transition that we're making is that we are making corrections to the other personal services category. The prior code pet grooming businesses and boarding kennels were their own classification, but they got lumped into personal services. We did not discover this until we went to go do a use request and discovered that a use that we know in all of our minds was supposed to be a special exception came up as being a byright use, so that makes this correction. So other personal services, with the exception of non-veterinary pet care services, will continue to be allowed by right as conditional use in professional office committed in neighborhood commercial, limited commercial, general commercial, light industrial, heavy industrial, and immediate agricultural conservation districts. This is how they were treated prior to the SSC conversion. It's just that the NICS code is much more refined and has a lot more categories than the SSC code did, so that's why instead of it being treated as one separate, one category, it's now standing two. In Article 5B2, the things that you see highlighted in red is actually exactly like it used to be. So stockyards, poultry houses, commercial breeding kennels, slaughterhouses, animal auction houses, animal shelters, doghouse, overnight pet boarding kennels, or sitting services, and we added the NICS code into that. And then we added some clarification because in the previous way it was written in the code, it was all lumped into one paragraph, so we pulled out the particular rules for commercial breeding kennels into their own section so that somebody doesn't have to read the clause and go, what does that mean? So we're specifically saying that if it's this group of uses, in number one, it has to go at 1,000-foot separation, and if it's commercial kennels, animal shelters, et cetera, it's a 500-foot separation. This is not different from how we treated under the SSC to NICS. This is simply a clarification of how it's published in the code so that it is clear and apparent that these two categories have different separation standards.
Question, Mr. Chairman. On the note, can you go back to number two? On number two, you've got a pet boarding kennel sitting services. Is that from use to residential use or off the line? I mean, you've got somebody with 100 acres, they got number of 100 acres.
So we do that, the separation is from structure to structure or from use area to structure. So in a special exception situation, as we, we may be familiar with the one on Peach Orchard Road, they had cited their facility so that it actually wasn't within 300 feet of anything, but still had to have a public hearing, and so the adjacent property owners within 500 feet of that harsh little boundary came to the public hearing. So because it's a special exception, there's going to be a public hearing to gauge substantial harmony, but you have 100-acre tract, then there's a good chance that if you're putting it right in the middle, then it's not going to impact anybody but yourself.
Yes, I understand. It's NAC, you've got C300.
Well, if it's in the AC, this is still going to be a special exception use, as it always was, so there will be a public hearing process for it.
But it will be structure to structure.
Structure to structure or use area to structure, because as you know, kennel and services and dog boarding services actually have an outdoor component for the animals. They may not stay outside overnight, but there is generally an area outside where they'll have for runs and to do their personal business, so that will be part of the byright area. Plan Commission does recommend approval of this request. It brings the NICS codes back to where they need to be, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Council, approve or reject? Sorry. It's been moved properly second, and then we have first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Okay, third reading, ordinance number 24995.
There have been no changes to this request in second reading.
Move the third or second. It's been moved properly second, and then we have third reading on ordinance 24995. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. On this number 24996, Ms. Hubbard.
That would be Mr. Brown.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, we have a public hearing tonight on ordinance 24996, and we have before you the ordinance that sets out revised sections 26-36 of our code and 26-37 of our code. And major points of this are, at least, the changes are showing in bold fire, but the whole, the whole sections are provided, since you can read the sections in bold fire in context. And the major points are that the look-back period from the time of conviction is three years instead of 10 years for both the title denied license or suspension or revocation of a license. And then regarding business activities that were related to the business enterprise in both cases, that's just, I'm taking questions prior to the public hearing. Any questions? Return to Brian. For the public's knowledge, before Sumter Council votes, second reading, we will have a public hearing, so I now declare a public hearing open. Anyone wanting to raise their opinions for or against this business license amendment, please proceed to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Hey, I'm Rob. I have a question on, I believe this is the right one. I'm looking at my phone verse, you up there, but under 8.6, where it talks about the billiard singles?
Under what?
It says, under section 1A, or under the B classification, class 8.6 beers and pool tables, co-bears. Is that the same as this?
That has nothing to do with it.
Okay. I was making sure that it was under the, the ordinance that we received was under 24996.
Sir, please state your name.
After the meeting, it's not on the agenda tonight, we can talk. So which question, name for the record?
Chris Armstrong.
I'm sorry.
Chris Armstrong.
Armstrong, okay, Mr. Armstrong. I understand that some letters went out that caused this confusion, but that didn't have anything to do with this particular business license change, so I'm sorry for that confusion.
I was just making sure, because on the publication that we received, it was embedded within that.
Right, right. Well, you know, we've got a lot of calls about it, but it had nothing to do with it, that's all I want to say.
Got you, so.
But we'll talk about it afterwards. Anyone else? Anyone else hearing none? Comments closed? Have a motion? Move second reading. Second. We moved it properly second, and then we pass second reading on the ordinance 24996. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. I have a motion. We have a resolution before us to, as we do every year, proclaim in April a spare housing month in Sumter. Move for approval. Right. If we moved it properly second, is that we proclaim April a spare housing month in Sumter? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Now to committee report, Public Works, Solid Waste.
Yes, we met, all were present, and we were still discussing, uh, road, Tanger River Road, trying to determine if it's a county road or a private road, and our research is that not a county road, so we just kind of left to that right now. There are some, some things we probably need to look at, some of these roads for emergency services, and I don't know if that might be something we can look at in the future with it, with it some type of ordinance or what, but that's all that was, we discussed.
Public Safety Committee, Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were pleased and fortunate to have a report by the Sheriff's Department with several of his personnel there, and it was amazing that the numbers show in every category, if I'm not mistaken, that crime has gone down in Sumter County. And so I just want to personally congratulate Sumter County Sheriff's Department on the fine job that they do protecting the citizens of Sumter County, and it's my understanding that those numbers will be made public shortly so the public can review those. Mr. Chairman, there was no action taken in the committee meeting, and that's included in my report.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. We have a special meeting with Sumter County Council to continue discussion on pending projects. We did go into executive session. The decision was made to continue the discussion, to continue to discuss and possibly add new projects on the next time. Come now to report from council members of local meetings or trainings. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be recognized.
Excuse me. I believe there was one action that came out of the meeting that the pin agreement had.
Oh, a vote was taken on the selection of persons to the committee, and it passed unanimously, five to nothing. There were two members that were not present when the vote was taken. Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of council, I want you to know that I have been having difficulty sleeping a lot of nights, and I'm having difficulty sleeping particularly when we have thunderstorms and inclement weather, because when that happens, I think about the folks on Shamika Road, like Ms. Webb. I think about the folks on Fellow Lane, like Ms. Blandit. Is the Mail Road, like Reverend Lorenzo Dankins and his family. Deer Run Lane, like Mr. Tyron Austin. Pam Angibon, Ms. Eunice Clay. And the reason I think about those folks is because I visit and talk with them frequently, and when I visit them, it's a very difficult travel because they live on private roads, dirt roads, and a number of these residents have elderly people, sick people who live on the road, and they have expressed difficulty with getting medical services. They've expressed difficulty with getting health products delivered to their houses. They've experienced difficulty with public safety, being able to access them. Of course, these are taxpaying people, and as you know, this is not the first time I've raised this issue with council. In fact, just recently, we discussed trying to amend what we have in consideration of public safety and public health, of course. Our county administrator got a Attorney General's opinion which said it was illegal for us to do that even under those circumstances. Appreciate you doing that, Mr. Administrator. But what I want to say to my fellow council members is that we cannot stop in our attempt to address the situation. We can't just say, no, we have to figure it out. We were elected to make the hard choices and to work on the hard problems. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I am requesting that we put this issue on our agenda for the next council meeting so we can begin discussing how we can make some adjustments to protect the folks that are our fellow citizens. I have witnessed citizens in ditches, I've witnessed kids falling in mud holes, walking to the bus stop. As a matter of fact, I was on Duffy Drive one day, I fell in a mud hole. My wife, Mrs. Washington, happened to be with me, and she wouldn't even let me get back in her car. And I don't blame her, but that's just how severe the problem is, and it's creating difficulty for me because when it rains, I think about these folks. And so I want to ask all of you, my fellow colleagues, to put on your thinking caps between now and the next time we meet at council and see if we can come up with some solutions to begin addressing this issue. Of course, as I mentioned before, District One is not the only district that has that issue. Councilman from Azalea has that issue. Council lady from Shiloh has that issue. Councilwoman from Pinewood has that issue. And so, Mr. Chairman, you said you also.
Same issue.
Right. And so, and so we have to, I think, demonstrate to the public that we understand that it's a problem, and we have to start figuring out how we can address it. And it's a bear. It's a bear. I'm not suggesting that this is going to be easy. It is a bear, and I realize that, but I also realize that as Team Sumter, we cannot allow our citizens to be, to live in the kind of condition that they're having to experience. So with that, I look forward to us beginning the conversation, and I yield.
Would you like to open that up with Public Works started there?
I think the citizens deserve to hear us talk about it a little bit, and then when we make some progress.
I'd just like it. Okay. I have you want to, but I think it would. We could probably make a little more grounds with it in a committee.
So I'm under, whatever you want to go with. Under normal circumstances, I would say yes, but become, but because it's become such a public issue and the cry has been so loud, I think the public deserves to hear a little bit of what we're talking about, and when we get to that point.
So you want us to discuss it in public, or council?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, are you finished, Mr.?
Yeah, I yield. Do it straight.
Mr. Chairman, I listened to what my colleague is saying, and I think we need to approach this issue as a public health and safety issue, because I look at what we're trying to do and what we're doing, and I commend our county administrator for what he's done in saying that when we have inclement weather on those types of roads that we have, vehicles that may get to them, and, but they're not always can get to them at the moment that they need to be there. And sometimes these events or incidences can, it's a matter of...
And then when we make some progress.
I'd just like to. Okay. However you want to, but I thought you would. We could probably make a little more grounds with, you know, committee.
So, so I'm, I'm, whatever you want to go with. Under normal circumstances, I would say yes. But become, but because it's become such a public issue and the cry has been so loud, I think the public, um, deserves to hear a little bit of what we're talking about. And when we get to that point.
So you want us to discuss it in public before council?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would like to, uh, are you finished with this one?
Yeah, I yield. Do your thing.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I listened to what my colleague is saying. And I think we need to approach this issue as a public health and safety issue. Because I look at what we're trying to do and what we're doing and I commend our county administrator for what he's done in saying that when we have inclement weather on those types of roads that we have, vehicles that might get to them. And, uh, but they're not always can get to them at the moment that they need to be there. And sometimes these events or incidences in some amount of five, 10 minutes or less before it becomes fatal. So we need to be able to get there on China, get there when it's needed. So it is an issue. Uh, we got to come up with a way, how can we protect all of our citizens? And how can we assure that all of our citizens can be protected by us? And, and if we are in a position where we can do something, make some changes, conversation, discuss it, then we need to do that because it is a very serious issue. And, and, and I sit here and, you know, I live on a highway. So I don't have that issue. But I know a lot of people do have that issue. And it's been here ever since I've been on county council. So I'm just hoping that we can find some dialogue to talk about this and maybe we can come up with some better solutions. But we just cannot ignore the issue because it's a life and death situation for a lot of people that live on them roads. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I, I cannot be quiet on this. It's been an issue for many, many years. And, um, I guess the added piece that I would like, um, for, um, county administrator and his staff to please consider is probably how, you know, like the ordinances that govern how we, um, add roads to the, the county system. You know, I realize that, um, especially the area, um, where, that, that I represent, there were roads that were really bad dirt roads when I was a child, um, riding the bus. And the bus would run, you know, get stuck on the road or, um, would run off the road and cover, you know, into the ditch. And, um, those roads were not a, a part of the, um, county system, but they did eventually, um, get added to the system. And some of them are paved roads now. And so the way those roads were added, um, I'm not quite understanding why we are not able to add the existing ones. That because some of those roads are still, um, though some of the existing dirt roads were dirt roads during that time as well. And those people, you know, I, I sleep because I work so hard. So, but I go to bed with it on my mind and I wake up with it on my mind when it's raining. You know, it's, as a representative for those people, you can't rest when you know that they are suffering whenever we get heavy rains. And so I, I say that to, to everything that, uh, my colleagues have been saying and I thank you for your advocacy. And, um, and I really look forward to us having this, this discussion. And I hope that some solid plans can come to fruition so that we can help the people who are struggling. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very welcome. Okay, monthly reports, Miss Blandon.
Michelle Air Force Base is 2025. A cus is in your packet. And if you have any questions or need to see it in a different format, please let me know. Um, the Gamma Iota prayer breakfast will be held on March the 16th. And the Spring Fest is March 23rd. The, um, Shrimp Base is April 25th. And there's a public drop-in concerning the Connect 378. And council members should be getting some information about Rotary's Centennial Plaza.
Mr. Chairman, one question from Miss Blandon. Ms. Blandon, Gamma Iota, what was the rest?
Omega sci-fi.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I'm sure that's what you were getting at, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thanks.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Bates, the county administrator for it.
Mr. Chair, council members, two items. First, I want to remind council that, um, next weekend, not this coming weekend, but the next weekend on March 23rd will be our fourth quadrant of the, uh, statutory test program. It will be held at R.E. Davis School. Uh, it will be from 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock. And for those of you who participated in the past, this is kind of like a kickoff ceremony for that quadrant. And then there'll be various activities throughout the community for the remainder of the month. But, uh, anyway, exciting opportunity for those participate in our litter efforts across Sumter County. Uh, the other item I'd like to mention is that, uh, as you know, we are now in the deep throes of our county budget process. Uh, I'll be meeting with department heads, um, rest of this week, first part of next week. And then we will develop a schedule to start our meetings with county council, which will be, uh, not only on regular scheduled council dates, but also a couple of budget workshops, depending on how the conversation is going. But I look forward to that in April. Again, regular meetings as well as probably a couple of budget workshops. So that we'll be in a position, hopefully by our first meeting in May, to have first reading, uh, second reading in May, the second reading and then first meeting in June, our third final reading on our county operating budget. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Coming now to the public comment portion of our agenda. Any citizen desiring to speak during public comment are limited to three minutes. Comments are to be given to the chairman. Uh, if there are any questions, they will be answered after the meeting. And now declare the public comment portion of the agenda open. Anyone who wants to speak to council, please proceed to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, I'm Carol Wade. I've never did this before in front of everybody, but I'm, I'm on Shakina Road. Yeah. We are on Shakina Road. The handicap is coming up. Um, it's eight tenths of a mile. And it's, it's a reservoir. I, I, I really can't describe it, it's just. Mr. Washington has been so faithful with us. But he can only do but so much and so could you guys, because only do us so much. But life is important to us. Um, so far we have had no serious, serious illness. Pray God we don't have it within the next couple of years because if we do, we're doomed. It will take a paramedic at least 25 to 30 minutes to get back there without losing everything on the truck. But if they get back there in 45 minutes, everything is safe. And if they get a patient to take out of there, it's going to take them an hour because of the roads. Yeah. And I'm talking two or three lined up a year. And we pay our tax money faithfully.
God forbid, we have fire back there.
We don't complain about anything. We just need a little help. We don't have as much as we can. But Mr. Washington can only do but so much as he's only one person and we cannot control God with it. And we're not responsible. This road was there before we was even, uh, I don't think they even thought we were going to be here. But it was, and it's a private road. And we've done everything. Everybody back there is low income. Everybody don't have a lot of money. But we do the best we can. A lot of people can't afford it and we can. And we're begging for help. We've done everyone, I, I will. Everybody's saying, putting the buck to the next person, pushing the buck to the next person. Well, we got to find who the next person is. Because everybody is sending us, it's like tomorrow, we'll do everything tomorrow. Tomorrow never gets here. I, but I do thank y'all for anything y'all can do for Shakina Road and any of the other roads. Because we do need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade.
Thank you, Mr. Washington, so much.
Thank you all.
Hello, I'm Michelle Ross and I just wanted to share some happy news with you. Um, the community hospital, I know it's set in the city. Um, but it is being recognized with a historic marker. And now we're just waiting for the abandoned building to be taken care of because there's no proper place to put the marker right now. And it still poses a threat for the people that live around the building. But it's still good news. Like this one you shared, that's it. Yes, sir. You were born there.
Yes, ma'am.
I know.
Anyone else? Seeing that public comment? All right, yes, sir. There's another speaker.
Well, no. I'm here today because.
State your name for the record, please.
My name is Lorenzo Rivers. I'm here today because we have a problem with dogs in front of my house on Harvard Street. And I've called animal control and they have come out, but the dog is still there. He was down around that home to see a, a blue nose pit bull that up and down the street all day, different times. I can't tell him to come at 2 o'clock, he'll be here 2 o'clock, but sometimes he's there 2 o'clock. All I'm saying is we need to get, uh, I need help getting control of that situation. And the other dog, this one is a pit bull and he hasn't been aggressive towards me, but he don't run from me. When I try to shoot, he don't run from me, which tells me if I make any other kind of move, he will attack. So, um, I love dogs, but I don't want any pets. So I'm just looking for some kind of help to get that. And, and the pit bull is the one that's, that I'm afraid of. All right? And, um, I, I just need somebody to come over and please handle that situation.
That's on Harvard Street, you say, Mr. Rivers?
Yes, 917 South Harvard. In that area between, um, Jehovah South, towards Monroe, Newbury and like that. He's, and if he come out, it shouldn't take long because if we wait 50 to 20 minutes, he'll come through. But, um, I just need someone that can catch him or whatever he do.
Thank you, Mr. Rivers.
You will.
Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? Sir? Have a motion to adjourn? Motion second. Can we discuss you? Here and then, uh, and thanks for joining, please say aye. Thanks everyone for attending.